Evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the City of Gloucester Zoning Board of Appeals Meeting of June 13th, 2024. This meeting is an in-person and remote meeting, a hybrid. The Zoom link for people wishing to be on from home or their phone is 883-0732-1089. I recognize in attendance myself, Joe Parisi, Kathryn Schlichty, Michael Nyman, Peter Cannavale, and I declare we have a quorum. Our first order of business is the approval of minutes from 5:30, 24.
Mr. Chairman, I have one correction. I was not present at the meeting.
Yeah. Motion to approve as amended?
Make the approval for the minutes on May 30th.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Minutes are approved. We have two applicants tonight that are seeking to either continue or withdraw. First, I'd like to ask Representative from the petition of Kathy and James Turner, speaking, seeking a special permit, 25 Grapevine Road. Someone here representing them? Are they online? Online, raise your hand. Oh, James is on. Wow, okay. Also make note that James Gelati members on remotely. 10 of the meetings, that gives us five members. Did you say they were going to ask for withdrawal?
Yes.
But they have to appear. They have to appear to do it.
And I had a question just even about the application, that they're applying for a variance. I don't understand that.
25 Grapevine?
Yeah. They only need a special permit.
Right.
I think.
Well, they've asked, at least they've asked the office to withdraw without prejudice, but they usually have, they have to appear.
Special permit, to me. That's up to them, obviously, you know.
Yeah. Well, I'm, we're not, we're not going to do a withdrawal yet because we're going to need them to at least send us a letter saying they want to withdraw. So we'll, we'll continue that to the 27th.
Mr. Chairman, I move continuance of the petition to Kathy and James Turner for 25 Grapevine Road to our June 27th meeting for the purpose of allowing them time to submit a written request for withdrawal.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Schlichty?
Yes.
Mr. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Cannavale?
Yes.
Mr. Gelati?
James, can you hear us?
Yeah, yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes. Okay, our next request for continuance is the petition of Kenneth Anson and Brian Rivoto, trustees, seeking a variance for lot frontage to construct a single-family home at 21 Rhea Bungalow Road. That's attorney Ellison, I believe she's online. Hands raised, can you call her in?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Board. For the record, Deborah Ellison, 63 Middle Street, Gloucester, Massachusetts. My clients are requesting a continuance of this matter. We have been contacted by Ina Butter's Council and we're having discussions with regard to the project, and we'd like to have some opportunity to continue those discussions.
Okay. I'm saying a motion to continue to June 27th.
I would move continuance, petition of Kenneth Anson and Brian Rivoto, trustees of Ronald M. Anson Trust, seeking variances 1.7, 3.2.1 for lot frontage, construct a single-family home. I would move continuance to, again, 627. Yep.
Second.
Motion made and seconded for continuance. Roll call, vote.
Mr. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Cannavale?
Yes.
Mr. Gelati?
Yes.
Ms. Schlichty?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our first hearing of the evening will be the petition of Vito Ferrara, seeking a variance under 1.7 and 3.2.1 for front yard setback to construct a pavilion at 220 Magnolia Avenue.
Excuse me, just a quick question. No continuance on 1218 Plum, or is that later?
That's already continued to the, that's, I thought it was continued that last time.
I'm good, okay. Sorry about that.
Name and address.
Hello?
Oh, here we go.
Hey. Vito Ferrara, 220 Magnolia Ave. We live on the corner of Condonland Road and Magnolia Ave. We were allowed to fill in a big ditch that we had there to make some flat land essentially. My whole yard is a big hill and rock and ledge. We have four kids, so we don't really have much room for them to play. This will allow that. We just want to put like a shade structure up, almost like what you see at Costco or Home Depot, those simple pavilions essentially, but I'm going to stick build it, so I have to put sonotubes in the ground, and that's what's requiring the permit.
The question I noticed, there's a shed there. That's not what we're talking about, right?
No, it would be behind.
That doesn't show on your plan.
It would be behind the shed, yeah.
And there's a big German Shepherd.
Yep, he's very friendly.
In God.
Yep. He guards the 30 chickens we have up there.
So it's just open-sided, it's really just a shade?
It's a shade structure overflow for storage, you know, trying to block out the industrial power as, as much as I can. There's a lot of trucks going by, so we're trying to keep things quieter, you know, but also utilize my, my property.
Right, because Condonland Road, I imagine, has a lot of activity.
Looks nice, yeah. Really busy.
Yeah. You've done a nice job with your house.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Any other questions by the board? There's plenty of room in that front flat yard area. Okay, we'll have to allow public testimony. If anyone in the audience wishing to speak in favor of the application, anyone in favor, if you're in the audience, you come up and you give us your name and address, or if you're online and you wish to speak on anything for or against, hit your raise hand button. I think everybody's on a device that I can see, so that would be the method. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Seeing none, is there anyone that wish to speak in opposition to the application? Any opposition? And seeing none, no need for rebuttal. You can sit, you can have a seat. Thank you. Discussion by the board?
Just the direct neighbor was, was in support.
The second, the second neighbor submitted a letter in support too. So there's two neighbors that are fine.
Clearly, topographically, there's an argument there. I mean, that's the only flat area that he has. So it's all fenced in for kids and stuff like that, so I don't have an issue with it.
Hey, can we have a motion?
On the petition of Vito Ferrara, seeking variance for front yard setback to allow the petition to construct a pavilion at 220 Magnolia Avenue, I'd move approval. I think the topography of the land creates a hardship for him as to where he can place this, and so I'd move, move yes.
I would second that. Does he have two fronts also? Is that, yeah, so?
Yeah.
So again, just difficulty as far as pushing away, you know, from the front with the building right directly behind and so on. So I think that also makes it difficult, supports the variance. So I would, I would second that.
We have motion made and seconded to grant a variance at 220 Magnolia Avenue. Roll call, vote.
Mr. Cannavale?
Yes.
Mr. Gelati?
Yes.
Ms. Schlichty?
Yes.
Mr. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes. We've heard our decision's favorable. We will draft the decision that will get off to you. I'll do that. You're all set. Hey, our next application is the petition to T&amp;J Real Estate Investments LLC, seeking to renew, modify special permit 1.9.3 and 2.4.5 to demolish and replace a pre-existing non-conforming single-family home for buyright conversion to two-family use at 6 Parker Court. Attorney for law.
I need to get brought in as a panelist, please. Okay, good evening. Let me share my screen and we will get going. For the record, my name is Joel Favazza. I am an attorney at Seaside Legal Solutions with an address of 123 Main Street here in Gloucester. I'm here on behalf of T&amp;J Real Estate Investments LLC. The principal of that is Jerry, he's right here with me. And we are here to renew some existing or some previous permits and tack on some additional permits that have become necessary, and I'll go through that as best I can. So this board has actually granted a special permit to alter and expand a pre-existing non-conforming structure on the site, twice basically. Granted it, and then you renewed it. We need to modify that at this renewal, and I'll explain that in a moment. We also need to add on the 245, a special permit for complete demolition and reconstruction. The conversion from one to two family is actually okay because the dormer stuff, I guess, according to the building department, they first made the determination on the first round of permitting wasn't exterior change requiring the permitting, but to the degree that the board feels the use permit is necessary, we'll certainly take that as a one to two, quote unquote, with exterior changes. So we are in the R5 High Density Residential District. We are in an undersized lot. There are left and right side yard encroachments, rear yard encroachments. It does actually comply with the front yard setback. It's pushed off the front yard, and there's a gravel parking area in front of it. And the brief history is that the previous owner went and got this relief, and then Jerry through his LLC purchased the property, went to begin work, and said, oh no, the permits expired, so he came to you, got it renewed. He pulled two different building permits, 588 and 706. One was for the actual second floor work, which was, again, supposed to just be adding dormers to the house that was there. And then 706 was for some additional interior demo. And so during the demolition process, they ran into structural integrity issues, and the back wall of the building started falling in to the building itself. And so basically Jerry just said, these guys, you know, take it down, because it was, you know, unsafe at the time, there wasn't even a fence up. There's a fence now, obviously. And so the city ordered the work to be stopped, and the existing permit that the board had granted and the renewed was revoked or terminated by its terms because the work now has gone beyond the scope of what was originally permitted. There was also, it's been, you know, kind of a parade of horribles for Jerry. There was also some tar paper that had asbestos, and so he had to have a DEP cleanup process take place. That's all complete now, but it was like another, you know, delay, another kind of unexpected turn of events for this. And so again, like I said, I need, I need at least three permits, the renewal by 243, modification under 193, and the addition of the demolition and replacement under 245. And again, if this board feels that a use permit needs to be granted for conversion of one to two with exterior changes, I will gladly take that. Again, for whatever the reason was, I don't think it was required previously. Have all the plans loaded up, and usually I blow right through these, but I do want to just kind of highlight this plan here. So as you can, as you can see, I'll get my little annotation out. The original structure had this extra little, like, you know, doorway out to the rear, and that's shown on the site plan. And if you go, oops, that was the wrong button, guys. One second, please. If you go past the site plan and you go to the floor plan, you'll see it's turned into this little closet here. If you go out to the site, however, there isn't anything poured for that back corner, and basically Jerry's considering not actually bumping that out. So the footprint may actually be smaller than what is being shown on this plan. So that's the only discrepancy from what is shown on this floor plan. It would have shown on the site plan as far as the structure goes. And the other thing I want to point out is you'll notice that the old deck came out and came over, and so it was further back than the main rear line of the building. However, per the floor plans, if you, you'll see that the, the back right-hand corner here, which is going to be an at-grade patio, is now flush with the rear line of the building. So again, there are some discrepancies between what the site plan was showing as the existing footprint and the, and the footprint being altered, and those discrepancies, again, are all becoming smaller. Again, there was a deck that I believe was at-grade, and this patio is going to be at-grade, so it's not really a structure that's part of the relief, but just as far as going, hey, I see two different shaped polygons, what's going on here? Let me make sure that we're all clear on that.
Question.
Yep.
So as part of your presentation, do we have a surveyed as-built? So we no longer have a building. So do we have, so prior to this, the building already existed. We weren't concerned about an as-built versus built. So do we now have a site plan as an as-built as well as a plan showing what's going to be built?
So the, the plans that were done by American Land Survey are still accurate as far as what is looking to be permitted, because basically we're asking to have the same permit renewed, and it just might be that Jerry does a little bit less than was originally proposed, because originally that back piece, for example, was going to just stay there because it was there. And so renewing the permit per the plans is of no harm, because he either puts that bump out back or he doesn't, but he doesn't go beyond anything. And so these plans are still accurate as far as what you would expect to see, again, aside from that bump out maybe being reduced, the, the deck area that I highlighted second, that's on these plans, shown as being level with the back wall. So that's not changed at all. It's just changed from the area of the deck that was there. But again, that was in these plans from 21 and 23 that hasn't changed between now and then.
So maybe I sneak clarity. Is the idea to pull out the existing foundation and put in a new foundation?
Yes, so the, the foundation has been, for the most part, repoured, and so the, the, one of the areas, the back right-hand corner where this patio is going, it was this deck, and this deck really wasn't even on any real footings. One of the reasons this thing fell down is because it was underframed, under-supported. And so the deck, for example, had some posts going down kind of into the ground, basically, and now there is a foundation wall that the patio will be, you know, built inside of, but it's all at-grade. So that's out there now. If you did a site visit and you looked, you saw some formwork and you saw some freshly poured concrete, and that freshly poured concrete, basically, I'll draw, you know, I draw this, I draw a line through here. Freshly poured concrete basically makes this general red rectangle, with the exception of this back closet, which, again, was part of the plans initially when the building was still there, but did not get any foundation or slab poured, because Jerry's thinking he might just delete that last little bump out. But basically, as, as the demo was going on, you know, Jerry started pulling things up, and there were literally piles of fieldstone for pillars. There were a couple, it looked like maybe six by sixes, maybe four by sixes, just kind of heading down, trying to hold the floor. So when he had the concrete truck come out, he poured the full rectangle. But again, to be very clear, the rectangle foundation that is there is for the total of improvements, and he is only looking to do what he is, let me get that annotation out, only what he's allowed to do per these plans. So if you look at this floor plan here, you'll see there's still all this jogs along the back of the house. And so when you go out there after this house is built, and you look at where the walls actually are, the actual structure, they will still follow the, you know, jogged profile of the previous structure. There will just be in this area where there used to be a poorly supported wooden deck, there's now at-grade concrete, and there'll be a patio inside that area. And again, that's, that's what has been in the plans from day one, but I think it wasn't always articulated as clearly as it maybe needed to be, and so I make sure that there's no confusion going forward as to what is out there.
I think the issue for me, it's not the, the issue for me is the footprint, because originally we didn't have anything to do with footprint because it existed, right?
We had pulled the plans from the two previous hearings, and the footprint does match what we approved, what he's, what's on here for tonight is a match to what we approved previously. My question too is about, well, what's the height? I mean, we had a ridge we were dealing with, so we didn't worry about the height because we couldn't change it. The ridge was the ridge, and you were going to build two dormers on it.
Sure.
An issue for us, it's a pre-existing ridge. Now it's gone. I don't know how tall it was.
So do, do we know from previously, you know, was it cited by an engineer at all?
So we've got it in the plan setting. These plans are all the 2021 plans. You'll see that to the ridge, which runs perpendicular to the dormers, it was 32 feet from the front, and it was 26.5 feet from average grade. And so those are the measurements that will control the rebuild also. It'll have to be 25.6 to the, the ridge that runs perpendicular with the street. And again, that measures in reality, if you stand in the driveway and look up, it's 32 feet from the driveway. And so those figures were on the 21 plans and will remain the controlling figures for this.
So I guess my question is a possible condition that prior to issuance of, wherever you want it triggered, that we would need a certification from a surveyor, engineer, that this plan is this or shorter or smaller? And if it's bigger, it's a problem, like a big problem.
Yeah, I mean, I expect the building department to require as-bills to be filed, and so that would be no problem. If the condition that the as-bills must show the property does not exceed the footprint from the 21 plans or the height from the 21, that's, that's no problem.
So gentle warning, if somebody comes back here a year from now and this building's a foot too high, do not expect any help from me. That's just gentle warning.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so moving on, we have the aerial photography and the city GIS data. And again, you can see from the city GIS how they have the deck poking further back into the lot in the rear of the, of the property, and that's getting corrected as part of this patio conversion. So these, this is the house prior to its collapse, the front and the back, or front and the side, rather. This is it under demolition, and then you can see that wall, now we're standing behind the house, you see the wall that's laying inside the house, the back wall that fell in as demo was occurring. And so then it got taken down, and so this is what, if you go out there today, you know, basically what you'll see. And he's been under a soft work order, so that's why everything's kind of left as is. The forms are still up, not because he doesn't want to finish it, but because he's not supposed to. So that's what that is about. So to get through the permits for the alteration and expand, it's the, so again, the reason the previous ones revoked is that unauthorized deviation from the project shall result in automatic revocations. That's what killed the last, the 23 renewal that you guys just did last year. So you just have to once again make a finding that the work is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing conditions. And when you say existing conditions, you have a two-year period, so you would still use the exist, the previous house as your starting point. You wouldn't use a pit in the ground, although I would strongly argue that a nicely-built house is much less detrimental to the neighborhood than a pit in the ground, which, which is what'll be left there if we can't get permits. And then for the modification, you just have to show that the interests of the neighborhood and the city aren't impaired by the change. And again, the change here is that we're going for this 2.4.5 demolition and reconstruction. And so I don't think, again, what's, what has happened in the construction process is going to make any difference to the actual outcome, other than it'll be overall a newer, safer building, and that's all-new framing, all-new foundation, everything like that, right? And you also show that it's good cause. Again, he didn't want to be back here before you again. He was hoping to be done building this thing by now, but here we are. And then for the 245 demolition and rebuild permit, you have to, again, replace the structures not substantially more detrimental than what was there. You have to make sure that the demolition and plans replacement are approved in the same hearings. That's part of what we're doing now. And that the construction and replacement has to be as expeditiously performed as possible. Again, Jerry will be on, you know, day 21, we get that certificate of no appeal and record it, he'll be back out there if he's allowed to be, right? And then making sure the proportion of the structure that constitute increase of the footprint, again, there's no increase of the footprint, so that last little bullet doesn't really apply. We talked about the other concerns that have been raised, and so I think like, you know, what I want to just kind of talk about, I think there was some suspicion that there was something nefarious going on here, like, you know, what's, what's Jerry up to? Why, why the whole building come down, right? And so just going to want to proactively address that concern. There is no difference to the final project than what has been proposed previously, and if Jerry's intention was to tear the whole thing down from the beginning, it did him no good to try and hide that ball. And I can't imagine this board would have viewed this project much differently if it was alteration and reconstruction or alteration and reconstruction with a demolition. It was going to be the same end result. So again, you know, conversations with Jerry, he very much did not want to have to take this building down, was obviously very disappointed that this was going to be an expansion to the work being done, but even to the degree that you go, you know, what, what did he gain by this? He gained nothing. He lost a lot of time, he had to spend a lot more money, and if he knew he had to demolish it to begin with, he would have asked to demolish it to begin with. This truly was not anticipated within the scope of work. And I think the other point I want to make is that, Mr. Nyman, to paraphrase what I've heard you say previously, when you're looking at these kind of retroactive permitting, which this demolition part is, one of the things that this board often looks at is, if this came in without having already done the thing, and we just looked at it clean, is this a project we would have allowed? And I would hope that if you look at it through that lens, you'd say, yeah, if he came in and said this building's a piece of junk, you know, and has to come down and come back up, I think this board would have said, that's fine, just make sure you do it safely, do it quickly, and, you know, the normal standards are 245. So for those reasons, I hope we have qualified for the renewal of the permit to alter and expand, the modification of that permit, and the demo permit under 245. And again, if this board thinks we need the use permit from one to a two, it's the 1.8.3 factor tests. You'd have to find that's serving a social economic need, adding housing, you know, adequate parking, there's more than enough room for three cars in front of the, of the, of the property, that the utilities are all sufficient. Neighborhood character, it's, there are singles, twos, and multis in the neighborhood, it's not in a FEMA flood zone, and obviously financial impact, it's going to help Jerry defer the cost of this total rebuild and the additional months of interest he's paid on his loan waiting to build it back up. And as was discussed at length at Tuesday's budget hearing, it serves the need for new growth tax revenue within the City of Gloucester. So if you think you need that permit sent over, we'll take it also. Thank you.
Questions, Kathy?
So, okay, so this is a little in the weeds, but, so we grant a special, the applicant takes that special permit and starts to do what's allowed under the special permit. Permit is revoked because demolition of the building was not allowed for. So I'm a little concerned that when he realized the building needed to be demolished, he didn't then go see the building department, because we have a building that's been demolished without oversight by the board, without, no, no protocol, with the city seeing that everything was complied with, things were disposed of properly, the proper utilities were notified, whatever the steps are for demolishing a house. So in order for us to modify a permit, we need good cause. The modification's going to be to allow for demolition that has already occurred. I don't think you've shown us what the good cause was, other than he was starting to do the dormers and a wall came down, and I believe there's some concern about the good cause good cause within the building department. And I believe that the building department has requested your client to demonstrate some of that good cause, the timing of it and whatnot. It's my understanding, none of that has been forthcoming. So while conceptually I have no problem with this plan, I have no, I mean, I voted for it before, I have no problem with it. But I'm greatly concerned about any contractor in this city that just goes forward and particularly an experienced contractor that says, ah, this isn't working for me, I'm going to take the whole building down. So for me, I need to see a little bit more about this good cause before I'd be willing to vote for a modification at this point.
Sure. So as far as the, that-
So are we dialoguing back and forth with Joel at this point?
Questions for, questions for Joel.
Okay, okay, yeah.
Yeah. So I guess the question is about, does he have anything to offer about good cause for taking down this building?
Sure. So in my conversations with Jerry about the timeline, this was not a, you know, they, they took something and said, oh, you know, that doesn't look too good. We might, you know, the thing fell and things started getting worse. And so it was a safety issue. And so for, you know, the safety of the people working the site and the safety of the neighborhood, you know, rather than having to get a security guard there to, you know, to keep people away, they decided to take it down. The other thing is that Jerry was in contact with the inspectional services department. I'm not sure whether it was, you know, whether it was miscommunication, whether it was poor communication on either side's part. I'm not looking to point fingers, but it wasn't that Jerry was radio silent. He had, you know, conversations with. And again, the, the entire removal was him trying to do the right, except after you, you knock the thing in because you don't want anybody to get hurt. And then he cleaned the site up. The other point I'll make as far as like the controls are usually in place, you know, he did have a demolition permit, right? It was for an interior demolition, it was not for the structural demolition. But it wasn't like, it was expected that he was just going to like, kind of cut the roof open and put up these two dormers. It was understood there was going to be, you know, some, some gutting going on, right? So there, there was permitting in place for demolition. And again, you know, Jerry is an experienced contractor and he, at the time, he had a very unsafe condition. He had a demolition permit, right? And he was in contact. And so this didn't go perfectly, neither the conditions on the site or the, the way it went in the aftermath. But as we stand here today, the site has been properly, you know, safely demolished and remedied. It's had environmental inspection. Again, the asbestos issue has been properly remedied and DEP is okay with that. So as you sit there and go, okay, am I retroactively permitting and, you know, a, a bad demolition? You go, well, no, because in the end, everything was taken down, everything was properly cleared and any hazardous things were properly remediated. So it's, you know, it's a clean site now. It was, you know, not the most efficient path to getting to it, certainly. But it's not that, there was, you know, sorry.
I mean, my, one other question is, so because he didn't notify anyone, OSHA wasn't involved, you have a collapse. You don't walk away from that unscathed. Putting two dormers on a house shouldn't have caused the building to fall down. And OSHA should have been there to investigate that. But they, nobody was notified. I have the details, all the notes taken during all the meetings and everything with timeline and, and promises that were made of stuff that was going to be presented to justify what happened. And none of it's been forthcoming. So you, you make it sound like, oh, he's doing something better. We're not rewarding bad behavior. Okay? Don't make it sound like, oh, he did a better thing by breaking the law five times. All right?
No, and, and that's not my intent.
I think the permit got revoked and you should be applying for a new permit. And then we'll take into consideration variances for setbacks, height, everything.
Well, with, with all due respect, you know, for one, you know, some of the things you've spoken about are outside the purview of the GZO and your jurisdiction is limited to the GZO.
Okay.
Secondly, more importantly, he could have, with, you know, the, the house not being there, he has two years to rebuild it and he still has the protections for where the footprint was. So there's no need for, you know, if you say, we're not going to, we're not going to renew your old special permit, apply for a new one. Okay. Can I please have a new special permit to alter and expand? Because for the next two years, that is all the relief necessary from the zoning board to rebuild, along with a 245 permit, to rebuild on the footprint. There's no requirement-
That's if it burned down or other reasons, not just because he decided to tear it down.
Uh, no, 40A allows it, you have a, it's a, it actually functions as to the use, right? We always lose protection of pre-existing non-conforming status when use changes, right? I go from, you know, a commercial use to residential use, I go from a two to a four, that sort of thing, right? And so you have this two-year freeze where you go, okay, you know, the use was this single or two-family residential and it hasn't been two years since the site stopped being used like that. So therefore you have not lost your pre-existing non-conforming protection. So even if it was a brand new special, brand new application, it would still just be a special permit. There would not be variances required under 40A for two years.
If the building existed, it's no longer there.
The building has to be gone for two years.
It's protection. It forfeited its permit.
After two years it would. If he, if he went away for two years and came back and said there used to be a building here, you'd say, well, it's been two years, you've lost your protection. But he's come back immediately within the two-year period to say, hey, I'd like to rebuild the building that was just here. Under 40A, if it's within two years, its protection's preserved.
But you're asking us to modify the special permit?
Yes.
To allow for, retroactively for the demo?
Yes.
Is based on good cause shown. We may modify a special permit for good cause shown. Was there a good cause for this building to be demolished? I mean, to me, that's the question, right?
Right. And again, this was not, this was not, oh, sure.
We just haven't seen it. I mean, we have not been presented with the good cause. I mean-
I showed you a picture of the collapsed wall this evening though. I mean, that was, you know, that was the start of it.
That was when they were-
The roof was already gone and the-
Well, the video of when it collapsed, where they had a camera set up to watch it collapse? I mean, there's so much contradictory in the thing.
I'm just concerned that there were, you know-
You can open up a can of worms. If you allow this, how many people or contractors are going to say, oops, it collapsed and now you're back for, you know, modifying another permit? I, I, I think that's the threshold. So I think the board is concerned, in my opinion, from what I understand, that you might be opening a can of worms, but for the petitions that people come in and say, oh, we forgot to apply for this demo permit. Now we're kind of changing it, but we're really not.
Well, with all due respect to that point, sorry.
Just one second. I, I don't really like our, this is just me. At some point-
Right.
I want to dialogue with the four of us and possibly with James, because I'm sort of listening. I'm not agreeing, I'm not agreeing with a lot of what I'm hearing.
We haven't got the public testimony.
Yep. So, but I feel like we're going back, I feel like we're being almost argumentative with Joel at this point. And I don't, I think I don't really appreciate that. That's all. I'm really looking to hear what other people have to say. I respect what's being said. I don't necessarily share the opinions of what I'm hearing. And I want to be very careful as I'm hearing, that we don't allow emotion to bring us beyond the authority that we have, that we be careful, that we stay right within the authority of what we have and that we use that authority. We just don't go beyond it. Yeah. I think there's, I think there's definitely some emotion here that needs to be-
Any other questions about, for the attorney, before we go to public testimony?
I'm good with the question.
Can I respond to Mr. Canava?
I'm sorry?
I just want to respond to Mr. Canava if, if-
Oh, yeah, I wasn't asking you a question.
No, I was just stating, I think that's part of the concern, board, like if we permit this, like, you know, are we opening a can of worms for, for the next one where they're like, oh, we accidentally demoed this?
But to what benefit? You know, there's no benefit to doing it that way.
I think it was the communication and the process that wasn't done to the agency according to the, you know.
For, for example, someone can come in here-
I don't have a problem with, with the project. I think the project is fine, like you said, through that lens, if it came before us the first time, the right way. And again, I don't have a problem. I'm just kind of feeding off what my members are saying, that's all.
Sure. I would just point out, you know, for example, I can do an exterior expansion with a single family under the, the special permit standard, or even under the finding of no increase, right? And I come here and I get that and I build my addition. And then I can come back and do a one to two with no exterior changes. And I've kind of cheated in that. So, oh, we don't like that because you're, you know, getting around something. This, this idea that someone would, oh, I'm not going to apply for the demo part of the permit, I'm just going to demolish it and have to come back and go through this, that does no one, you know, the contractor, that the bad contractor we're afraid of doing this on purpose is not benefited by this.
I don't, like I already stated, I don't have a problem with this petition or this project. I just, from what I'm hearing, this is what I'm gathering. This is what I'm hearing.
And so the last thing I'll say before I stop is that I just talked to Jerry and, you know, he, he wanted to be reiterating that the demo permit was for the removal of the roof as part of the second floor demos. The roof coming off was not outside the bounds of the demo permit he had. Again, taking the first floor out was, but the second floor and the roof was part of, there was a demo permit. And again, trying to do the right thing when the building was coming down, Jerry called DPW to get the water cut off. He called the power company, the electric call, you know, he made the calls in the moment to get these services terminated because the building was coming down. And so this was, this was not premeditated. And this was him addressing an unexpected, unfortunate turn. And I don't think you're here rewarding bad behavior or rewarding breaking the law because if you take it the most negative light, it didn't do him any good and he accomplished nothing by doing it. And he would know from the outset, it would, would never accomplish anything productive by doing it this, this, you know, behind the scenes way. He knew it had to come down, he'd ask you in the beginning, it needs to come down, we're going to take it down. You say, yeah, go for it, right? There was, there was no gain, no ill-gotten gain here. It was just unfortunate time expense and headache for everybody.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a problem with it. I just, just trying to hear what the board's saying. And that's kind of the feedback I'm getting from them.
Other question? Hey, we'll take public testimony. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak in favor of the application? Please either come forward or raise your hand if you're on the computer. Anyone in favor? Hearing none. Oh, wait, we got one handed. You got that?
Hello?
Yes. Go ahead.
I'm not, I'm just, I'm in favor of-
Name her. We need your name and address.
Do, so I'm not really accustomed to this type of meeting, so I'm not sure I'm even allowed to agree because I'm not really involved, but I was just listening.
You're a member of the public, you have a right to weigh in for or against. But the only thing I need is for you to state your name and address first, and then tell us what you think.
Nicole Norikian, 10 and 1/2 Mason Street, Salem, Mass. And I'm in approval of what they're asking to do. I think it's fair in that you shouldn't be afraid of the precedent that may be set for the same reasons. There's no benefit to the, to the person doing the construction. And it was unfortunate. I feel, I feel like that person has gone through enough that it should be made a little bit easier for them. I don't even know this person.
Okay, that it? Thank you.
Thank you.
Wishing to speak in favor? Seeing none, is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the application? Please come forward or if you're on the computer, raise your hand. Anyone in opposition? Seeing none, closed public testimony, discussion by the board.
Yeah. So I think rule of thumb for me, and I thought quite a bit about this particular hearing, but the rule of thumb has always been for me, what would I have done if this was presented before it occurred? And we've had not necessarily a collapse or an alleged collapse like this, but we've had many others where we've said, yeah, we're good with that. We made somebody tear half a deck off. We made somebody tear the whole roof off over in East Gloucester back in the, a few years ago. So when I look at this, I look at this and think, what would I have, how, what would I have thought of this if it was presented to me before the building came down? And for me, it's just fairly simple and straightforward. I think it's, I would have said, sure, I think it's a better building. I don't know this gentleman. I don't know if he's honest, if he's dishonest. I, I don't, I don't know. I don't want to accuse him of anything. Other people know more than I do. I mean, I know some. But when I look at sort of the facts and I look at zoning, I just think, there's no reason why I wouldn't allow these special permits. And if we need to give them a use permit, I would do that as well from a one to a two with exterior changes.
I agree with you. We would have, would have voted for it 100% if that was the application. I'm only trying to follow the law. And what we've been given for, be spelled out to us in what Point Catherine made, was an applicant seeks relief in the form of a renewal of a permit and subsequent modification to authorize the deviation. The GZO requires the board to make a finding that the applicant has demonstrated good cause to do so. And and when, when people that were doing, handling the situation made these comments, the applicant made many representations about having documents, videos and other evidence to bolster his claim regarding the collapse. He was asked to provide those items to the building commissioner in March and has not done so. So that kind of like, okay.
So are we, are we looking for that still? Is that something that is going to satisfy-
You have to show good cause.
Right.
For us to say we're going to renew it.
Right.
The applicant has to show good cause. He has to demonstrate good cause to do so. You tell me what the definition of that is. I mean, I think-
Well, my, my whole thing is if they didn't make that claim, say they had all these video footage or whatever, and they said, hey, you know, this collapse, it happened. And I think Joel made a, you know, decent point, like what gain did he have other than, you know, losing time and money? Again, like Michael said-
Well, he gained, I'll tell you what he benefited. He didn't have to follow the oversight of the city's building commission.
Okay.
Because he did it all without even telling them. He didn't, the fire department had no oversight, the electrical inspector had no oversight, the plumbing inspector had no oversight. That was the benefit. He got to do it how he wanted.
I would assume that's-
Let's assume that's all correct, Joe. Yeah. No, no issue there. I'm not going to argue that point. Is that within our purview? Does that matter? So not does it matter like I like it or I don't like it, but does it matter at zoning board? It's because for me, it doesn't matter because any, any punitive penalties like triple, you know, permit costs or some other penalty that the city would, would, you know, levy against him, have at it. If that's, if that's within the rules of the city to do that, have at it. But does that technically matter to you and me at zoning board? That's an honest question.
Only thing that, the only thing that matters is that we have to, he has to demonstrate good cause to us to approve it.
So his argument is, believe it or not, I mean, his argument is that part of the building was collapsing and out of safety, he tore the rest of it down. So that's his, that's his argument for good cause.
That good cause?
Yep. So believe it or not, and again, part of it for me, I think I've, I think I've told this story for me back in 2000, because it was nine, it was 9/11 when this actually occurred to me, when I was doing this building back when I was building and construction. I, I didn't know that I violated the permit that I had, that I tore the entire building down. And we said we were going to leave the first floor and we were going to leave a wall and stuff like that. And we got there and it was crazy to leave that floor and that wall. So we tore it off and we filled the block foundation with, you know, cement and steel. And it was a much better building. We're all done. But I violated that permit and I didn't know that I did it until I sat on this board and we permitted somebody who did the exact same thing. I don't remember who the applicant was. And the implication of a neighbor was that we shouldn't allow the building to go back. And I just looked at him like, planet are you from? Get me, all the other lots surrounding, just a minute. All the other lots surrounding this have houses and you're saying because this guy accidentally tore his house down, that he went beyond his permit, we shouldn't allow him to put the house back up? Not for me. So anyway, not the same, but that's how I look at it, that that's his just cause. So you have to decide whether you believe it or not, right? Whether that's credible or not.
So I'm confused. Is he not going to have to go before the building department, the electrician, inspector, the plumbing inspector? What am I missing?
New construction.
For new construction.
When a house collapses, your first call isn't to the guy to come tear it down.
There was asbestos there.
There was asbestos. There's gas pipes, water lines, electrical, things that are public, public safety issues.
You're right.
So he shouldn't, so he shouldn't have done what he did. He shouldn't have done it in the manner that he did it. So I, I'm just back to the same thing again.
Well, my question in the beginning was, should it be a new application where we would have the ability to scrutinize it versus a renewal of something that's been revoked? We're still not clear if we have that. It was technically revoked because he violated, he deviated from the plan. So as far as the building department's concerned, that, that special permit is revoked, that permit is revoked. So should it be a new application, subject to new scrutiny? Can we, I'm, that's why I solicited legal's opinions on this and you all got copies. So that we can maybe do the right thing, you know, and.
Yeah, but if you read the conclusion, I, I mean, I, I read it all a couple of times and I spoke with them earlier today. But his conclusion is, is just, is demonstrate good, just good cause, justifying the modification of special permit they are seeking. Ultimately, the remedy for unlawful deviation from plans incorporated into a special permit is that the owner must be given a reasonable opportunity to seek the relief that would rectify the illegality. Given this requirement, the standard for demolition reconstruction, pre-existing non-conforming single-family home remains the standard. So I don't, I don't think they, I don't think they told us. Did they tell us which way we have to go? I don't think they did.
Oh, they don't do that, to give you case law and stuff to go.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't make him reapply unless, unless a lawyer told me that I had to.
Must be noted, however, that given the apparent unauthorized deviation from the approved plans of October 2023 special permit, the board should be aware the law typically allows an applicant to be given a reasonable opportunity to rectify the illegality. If it might in theory be rectified with a variance, permit or other action by the local board, give it reasonable opportunity. That's my question in the beginning was, should this be a new application and not a modification? That would be a remedy to fix it. If it needed a variance, they would have to come for a variance. If it, just to renew what was there, and I still go back to the whole idea of do we really know what was there because we never, we never scrutinized the plans because we weren't expecting the house to come down? If it was, we would have established a height in our decision.
So did you not agree with the presentation that Joel gave that in that, in that, that's a question, in that set of plans, there is a height that's established.
On an elevation.
And that it could be reestablished by an engineer. Let's see, the true or it isn't, if it's true, then I think that answers the height question. I'm not sure sure what requirements we have for the exterior shell, in other words, where the windows are or, we don't care about any of that stuff. I mean, we care as people, but we don't care as a zoning board, you know what I mean? So I, I don't feel like we need, though, I, I can't imagine the building department doesn't need structural plans and framing plans.
They have those and they'll have them. And like I said, I did look up the two previous hearings and this footprint is identical.
Yep.
So I didn't have an issue with any of that.
So that was the concern that I had and I think that's been satisfied, yes.
Is, did he lose his permit? And should it be a new application or are we just going to modify?
I would move to modify it, that's what I would do, but obviously I'm just one vote here, so.
More discussion by the board, anybody? James, anything?
No, I'd move to modify, I'm with, I'm with Michael on this one.
I am not comfortable moving to modify because based on this memo that we got and the, what had transpired and what had transpired since the building came down, I have doubts about whether there's good cause to modify. And I'm kind of leaning with Joe, I'm like, bring in a new application. I think we all think that land shouldn't sit there vacant, but I think you start with a blank piece of land.
Mr. Chair.
Unless you can provide the building department with something that demonstrates that it was in need of taking down, that the asbestos was properly disposed of, that the oil tank was properly disposed of, all these things that the building department was concerned with.
Mr. Sheriff, may I?
One sec.
Thank you.
I've had instances in the past on things we've permitted and they discovered problems. And the building commissioner would call me as chair and say, hey, can you pull out your plans that you approved for this one? They're, they're finding out that the wall that was the key piece of the setback is rotted underneath. They called me, I came out, the building inspector came out, he looked at it. He made a recommendation to me to see if we would have any objection to it. They did it and that was easy to do, easy.
Didn't do that.
Well, I'm, I'm just going back to Catherine, I just. Yeah, I think you're just, I think you're way out over your skis, I'm sorry.
It goes to the issue.
What authority do we have about determining whether he abated his asbestos properly?
His whole argument for, for modifying the special permit is because he had good cause to take down the building.
But how's that related to his asbestos? I don't understand.
Well.
It's not, it's just something that.
It's not.
No, it's polluting the conversation, I'm sorry, it's, it's not.
That's not what she's talking about.
Okay.
She's saying he has to show cause to have taken it down.
I think that's fair, I don't think, but I, I don't, I don't think that's what you were just, you were talking about an oil tank and asbestos and this and that. And I'm just saying, that's, that's polluting how you're thinking about this claim, this, this application, I think.
No, I'm just saying that it, it, these are kind of the reasons why we have a demolition permit, right? So the demolition can be overs, can be supervised and it wasn't supervised. So then was there a good cause, I mean, you know, did the wind come and blow it down or, but I, I don't know if there's.
Certainly wasn't an emergency.
And to, and to have the city be notified that it was a vacant lot, they were never notified by the applicant that the building went down.
If I may, Mr. Chair, if the board would permit me a continuance, I believe I can provide in advance of the next meeting, some of the things concerning where permits pulled to remove the oil tank, you know, show the evidence that DPW was contacted for the water, show evidence that National Guard was contacted for electricity. You know, I can, I can submit those things, they weren't submitted previously, not to avoid the issue. I think good cause as I understand the GZO and as has been stated today or differently, but I don't want to fight about this if I can just satisfy and show the steps that were made. The good cause is about modifying the permit, not about whether they did a good job demolishing the building. Then a good cause itself is self-evident, the building's gone. So that's good cause to, need to add this additional stuff. I can, if you want to know that, you know, there was some diligence done, I can, I can show that. I think we are outside the purview, but I understand pragmatically, two weeks to satisfy this question is the easiest path. And I'd be happy to take it if I could be granted those two weeks.
Are you intending to satisfy the building department in their questions?
So.
It's not our thing, but they specifically, they would have recommended to us that there was good cause, but they, what they asked for to prove it was never forthcoming.
So I'm, I'm happy to provide as much as I can get. I guess again, what I would say is that, Mr. Naiman made the point also, enforcement mechanisms are to the Special Services Department for that. We are under 40A in the GZO, as I'm happy to provide, you know, additional information and color for this board to consider and get a better handle on what went on out there. I can't promise you that I'm going to have, you know, I can't, I'm not going to make Mr. Akari promise anything, right? He can still be like, yeah, I still hated the way this happened and I'm going to find this guy when I get a chance, fine. But I can provide you just a little more color and detail as to what went on, you know, in that process. If that is something that would help some people get more comfortable with it.
Mr. Chairman, I, I would also like the continuance so I can have an opportunity to consult with legal to make sure I'm not outside my lane.
They want to do that or we want to deal with it tonight?
No, I'm, I'm fine with continuing. Want to do that to six twenty seven or no?
We have a lot of continuance.
Yeah, we got.
Yeah.
Two tonight. We already have five, so that's, we're at our limit. See how many hearings we can have a night.
I am.
Was that longer than it was?
In our operations.
Early days.
What's it back when I started?
Go to eleven.
We were eleven, we had to midnight.
Twelve thirty.
Two, three, four. Have Pump Street, five, two tonight, the seventh, we're at seven.
I think it will be resolved pretty quickly.
I'm, I'm fine going to the twenty seventh with it if you guys are.
Now, there's a forty, there's a state regulation. I was just looking for the shortcut. Well, continuing, if there's too many, we won't get to it. Need a motion to continue.
Get to that. A petition of T and J Real Estate Investments LLC seeking to renew, modify special permit 1.93, 2.45 to demolish and replace pre-existing non-conforming single-family home for by right conversion to a two-family use at Six Parker Court. Move continuance till our next meeting, six twenty seven.
Back here.
Vote, vote is made to continue, roll call vote.
Mr. Giladi?
Yes.
Mr. Canavo?
Yes.
Mr. Schluckt?
Yes.
Mr. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Prezy?
Yes.
Thank you.
Six twenty seven.
Thank you very much.
My next application is the petition of Kristen Eisenhoff, seeking a special permit under 1.9 to alter, expand a non-conforming structure, a variance under 1.7 for side yacht setbacks at eighty-one Dennison.
Hi, I'm Matt Weston. Kristen approached my partner and I, Dan LeBlanc, wanting to upgrade this space of their house in 2000. There was a major.
Could you state your address?
What's that?
Your address.
Oh, I'm sorry, eighty-one Dennison Street. House was majorly remodeled and somebody came for the board in around 2000, 2001 to, to basically connect two buildings. The larger building that you can see in the first page of the print, in the, in the photo there, that's closer to the water, was actually like a warehouse kind of a building. They turned that all into living space. And the front part that's closer to the road, which we want to modify, is kind of ancient. It's moldy, the roof structure is two by fours. The petitions are all weird and we're trying to make, what we're trying to do is, is make the space more handicap friendly for her mother who lives with her. So what we'd like to do is just fill in this little notch that's in the side of the north elevation. It's about six foot six by eleven and basically square up the building. We want to tear the, the roof completely off and put in a new roof structure that can be properly insulated. We want to cathedral it with a structural ridge, just to kind of create the appearance of more room. It's kind of a small part of the house. As far as, you know, what the board would be kind of deciding, I, I think it's really only the, the setback. The roof structure part of it, we're only, we're only going up like, like 10 inches in the front and, and maybe two foot nine inches at the part where it meets the, the garage. Because we're just, basically it's a stepped roof right now. So we just want to square everything up and create a, a straight roof line. Most of you are probably looking at an older print that I, I gave to everyone in the packets. And I mistakenly didn't give the last drawing, which was ever so slightly different. So I talked with Allison and she said that in lieu of maybe a continuance that maybe I could just, because it's so subtly different, that I could just present anyway. The, the only difference from the packet that you have is the, the roof line goes up about eight inches because they hadn't allowed in the, in the first elevation drawings for the new framing. And that the, the part that goes over the notch that we're filling in kind of carries out over the garage so that we can change the stairway to kind of go down at a, at a right angle into the garage, allowing maybe for a future lift for a wheelchair. The deck on the side have steps in both directions. The original goes in one direction, in the wrong direction if she was to have to get out that egress in a wheelchair. They, they show steps here, but most of this, most of these decks, little steps in the front and the deck on the side will have a ramp for a wheelchair.
So, so Joe, far as special permit, if he's going up 10 inches or two foot nine, as long as he's not adding another level, we don't, we don't consider that an increase in non-conformity.
I don't understand the variance.
It doesn't need a variance? They only need a special permit for that.
For the notch.
Seventy square feet.
Yeah, it's seventy-seven square feet.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, it's just, this, this picture, the newest one you gave, it shows it already down. If you look at here, right? It was here and he wanted to. Well, I, yeah, I think it's just a special permit.
It's all you need, special permit, yeah.
That's what I saw.
Good, this, may all of our hearings be this simple, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that last guy was a tough act to follow.
That's why we make the big bucks.
Thanks for the interior pitches, we don't really need those, but I, I'm looking at them.
They were a part of the package, those are just concept ideas, but.
All right, so everyone's clear, we're, we're just, it's just an application for a special permit to alter and expand a non-conforming structure. Threshold only being is a substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than what exists today.
This is a two-family, correct?
As far as I know, it's only a, a single family.
Oh.
But if, I didn't know how to find the record for that. And when I talked to the assistant building inspector, he said, oh, don't worry about it, I'll figure that out. But he never told me, so.
Because you're not changing the use.
No, no, it's exactly the same. We're reconfiguring the, the, all the petitions inside and adding pocket doors so that you can go through with a wheelchair without trying to open the door and stuff like that, you know, it's mostly, it's just making mom more comfortable basically. And it's really drafty and really moldy. And we're going to be spending a lot of money on spray foam and mold remediation.
Made your case, I think, well, if you have nothing else to add, we'll go to public testimony. For anyone in the audience wishing to speak in favor of the application, please come forward or raise your hand if you're online.
Take a seat, thanks.
We do have one person on an iPhone. Do you have that?
Not for a lot.
We'll see if she's. Probably want to get first in line. No, okay, anyone wishing to speak in favor? Is there any opposition, anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
She's on.
She's back up again.
She's on, I, I lowered her hand.
Ms. Quinlan?
Hi, yes, I'm here.
Name and address, please, and tell us.
Hi, my name's Kai Quinlan and my address is seventy-nine Dennison Street. We're in the little brown shingled house next door to what was historically our barn before, before our time, of course. Donna, who was our neighbor who lived in Kristen and Sean's house when, when we moved in. And her sister, who was disabled, lived in the front cottage. She's the one whose family owned both houses. She's the one whose family owned both houses initially and she's the one who created the little in-law unit. And we've been really lucky to have them as neighbors and Kristen and Sean, their mom Barb, who's a really quiet neighbor, but because the house was originally the barn to our house, it's already within, it's already, you know, just a few feet from the property line. It's already in violation of setback just by its very nature since they were one property. So any change to the use or the roof line has a pretty big impact and we, we were in communication throughout, you know, with Kristen and Sean and knew that they planned to make it easier for their mom and we, we get that and support that. But we did have some concerns that we'd expressed to them, especially pertaining to increased traffic on that side or social space on that side. You know, the addition of a larger deck or sliders and most especially in terms of the roof height because it's so tight to our property and we have so little land. Our lot is zero point one one acres and most of it's in the water, whereas the eighty-one Dennison is more than double at zero point two four acres. It just happens to be squished right up against us and we received copies of the plans within the last two weeks, but those were completely different from the plans that are being proposed tonight. Those were actually plans dated November sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. We only got them in the last two weeks and we printed them, we met on-site, you know, Kristen and her mom let us come over and stand there so we could really understand in person and look at the sun and study how it falls because we have very little land and, and, you know, our patios and gardens, which took many years to establish, you know, we're worried that those would be cast in shadow and nothing would bloom anymore and that we wouldn't be able to sit in the sun on that side of the house. There's almost no land on the other side. And we did a study based on the November sixteenth, twenty twenty-three plans and we were okay with that roof height, which was proposed to take the twelve-foot roof height and extend it all the way back to meet up with the garage and to bump out what's now a bump in. And, you know, we would lose a little bit of light in the morning, but we can live with that so long as we get the, the full light, you know, in the rest of the day, nothing's going to die. I can only speak to the plans we were provided with. We only got these plans last night, these plans that are being proposed today, even though they're dated June seventh. We got them last night and haven't really had time to fully study them, but the difference of three feet would, you know, we need more time to study that, but we aren't comfortable with that because it would significantly impact our experience on our property. And as far as the egress, there's a little egress now with a single door, not double sliders, and there's a little platform with steps down there. And they do go towards the back of the house. That was added by the previous owners from whom Kristen and Sean bought the house and it was added illegally without a permit. What was there when they bought the house was two antique granite pieces. And, you know, we didn't raise any ruckus because, you know, we thought, well, it does make it safer, it gives it a railing, but it's just an egress. And, you know, there's, there's egress out the front that is flat and that is wheelchair-accessible already. And, you know, we'd really like to ask that these things be considered and we have more steady time with this new plan that we just got last night. We'd like more time to talk to Kristen and Sean. They're good neighbors, we've always had a good relationship. You know, we'd like our concerns taken into consideration because that jump in roof height and the addition of steps in both directions, while I'm really sympathetic to making it better for mom, I have to think pragmatically about long-term being at my house and you never know if someone's life is going to change and they need to sell or we did. And that unit may not always be used by Barb, who's an awesome neighbor and really quiet, but if the usage changes and that becomes an Airbnb or becomes a two-family with what's now a single family, it is on the books as a single family, by the way. You know, that added traffic of having steps down or any increase in size of that doorway or increase in size of that egress, the landing there being turned into a larger deck, et cetera, and having steps to the front encourages parking on the street, which makes it really difficult to get in and out of our driveway and it encourages that to be a social space, which right now it isn't and historically hasn't been. That's right outside my bedroom window. I'm also concerned, and I've expressed this, you know, in my communications with Kristen around this, that anything that does vent there, that uses a downdraft for the kitchen because my bedroom window is right there and our properties are so close, also laundry soaps and smells or dryer sounds, you know, kerplunk, kerplunk, or that zipper going tick, 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 we're so close that, you know, you, we already make great efforts to give each other privacy, but when we have so little land and can't go anywhere, I don't really understand what the needs are for the higher roof when the previous plan already, you know, already had an extension of the roof at the existing roof height and we'd already sort of agreed to that with some minor stipulations on window sizes staying the same and the landing and steps staying the same and the door size staying the same. And lastly, there's a toilet waste pipe that's already inside the setback area because they were one property and I wonder when the bump out happens, where will that go? We don't want it to be moved any closer, it's not shown on the plans right now. And that's concerning because if anything were to fail, I don't know exactly what it is, but I think it's like where their defunct toilet is in the garage. So, and it's where their new bathroom would go on option three of the November sixteenth, twenty twenty-three plans that we have actually had an opportunity to study. So we'd want to ask that that isn't moved any closer inside the setback and also I had put the question and not received an answer yet, are there any new systems, you know, mini splits or propane or, you know, what else would vent? I'm concerned about things, new, new things venting to that side, not just a stove. I know downdraft is a way that you can get it to go to the other side, but what's not shown on the plans at all is what other systems might be put in with vents there. You know, just in terms of noise or smells or fumes or other things that, you know, you might not want to enjoy in your garden or your bedroom. So there are a bunch of concerns and we've expressed those, but they were all based on an older plan that we just got two weeks ago and we only got this plan last night and we're not really comfortable with not having a chance to review it and we're also not comfortable with this increase in roof height and want a chance to assess that and discuss it with the, with our neighbors.
Thank you. You raised some good points and that causes me to have questions, too. The application that we were given weeks ago, and which I based my site visit on and review of this, is the November sixteen, two thousand twenty-three plans. Now, if somebody walked around and handed us these, which aren't acceptable at this late time before our meeting, I'm not even considering that plan as part of the application in my world, so I don't know what that's all about. And I agree, now, there's no, what I, we're looking at and if we're, and if the applicant is saying, no, that's not what we want to apply for, well, you're going to reapply because it's not what we studied and what's before us. Who's the applicant? Are you submit, are you saying you're submitting plans at this later date and you want us to consider them tonight? Need to go to the podium.
The only difference in the height of the roof is we didn't allow for the new framing. So in order to frame it up to code two-by-twelve or two-by-ten rafters, we have to go up about nine inches. So the difference in this plan and the plan that you have is about nine inches higher and then it goes out over the existing garage.
What do we think about bump outs and things that weren't on the drawings I studied?
The, 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 I'm not sure how to answer that.
Well, we have protocol and we have laws we follow.
I know.
Except this, a new, a new application modified on the night of the hearing. We're automatically continuing it no matter what.
Well, that's what I, I called and, and asked if I should get a continuance and I was told that these were so close to the other drawings that, that I could, I could bring these.
Yeah, we don't accept things seven, seventy-two hours within the meeting. We're private citizens, we have to have time to look at this stuff.
I understand.
And I got it tonight during this hearing, during this public, not even before the hearing, I got-
I wasn't trying to pull a fast one.
I get it.
I asked, I asked the question and I was, I was fully willing to, to push it to the next meeting.
There's not going to be any room at the next meeting. Anybody agree with that? If it gets continued, it's going to go to July eleventh. Is that the date? Any questions? July eleventh.
I would move a continuance for the petition of Kristen Eisenhoff seeking special permit one point nine to alter, expand a non-conforming structure and a variance one point seven, three point two point one for side yard setbacks at eighty-one Dennison Street to July-
I'm sorry?
Eleven.
Eleventh.
Motion made and seconded, roll call vote, continue to July eleventh. And to be clear, this is the plan you want us to consider?
Yes, the ZBA submission plan.
Okay, we'll go back out there, we all got nothing else to do. Roll call.
Mr. Giladi?
Yes.
Mr. Canavo?
Yes.
Mr. Nyman?
Yes.
Ms. Lipton?
Yes.
Mr. Prezy?
Yes. I would continue this case to July eleventh. Okay, our last hearing of the evening is the petition of Mary and Douglas Humphrey, seeking a special permit to alter, expand a non-conforming structure under one point nine at one fifty-six Hesperus Avenue.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening. Attorney Meredith Fine, one oh eight East Main Street, representing Doug and Mary Humphrey, who are either, I believe, in the room with you or online. And also with us tonight, I believe, is Lynn Alivato of Treehouse Design. I'm going to share my screen. I'm going to go pretty quickly because I think this is a fairly straightforward request. This, so this is the neighborhood where the application is being presented from on Hesperus Avenue on the way to Magnolia. There are two principal buildings on this property, which is called the Peabody Estate. This top photo is the main building, which has four condominiums in it. And then this bottom building is what was formerly a carriage house and is now a one, one unit, a condominium unit in the condominium, a standalone building. So we're seeking a special permit to alter and expand a non-conforming building. Mr. Prezy, can you see this pretty clearly?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So the problem with this building is, the main problems this application is trying to resolve is the building has no storage at all and so everything is stuffed into the living space. And the staircase to the second floor comes up through into the middle of the second floor and is very unsafe, has no, I'll, I'll show you a picture of it later. So adding storage and fixing the staircase are the main drivers of this application. The current non-conformities are in the front yard setback and on the right side setback. They both encroach. And then over here on the left is the driveway and a parking area, so they can't really expand on this side. And the building is currently nine hundred and seventy-two square feet and they're asking to add four hundred and forty-six square feet for a total footprint of fourteen hundred and fourteen square feet. Treehouse Design does such a nice job of modeling what these things are going to look like. So this is a current, the current side of the build, one side of the building, they're going to take out these exterior stairs and in the back here, they're going to add a little workroom under the deck. And over here, the, where the stairs are, they're going to add some storage. Then on this side of the building, they're going to bump out this top dormer and make the second floor bed, second floor bigger and have a better ceiling. And then here's the added storage that I referred to over here. And then this is a shot from the road, they'd like to add a mud, a mudroom and storage area. And then again, this is bumping out the, this is the same as this, bumping out the dormer. So on the first floor, they're adding this work, they'd like to add this workroom, a storage area and this mudroom. And then on the second floor, they're going to take this, move the stairs from the middle of the second floor and put them on the side here and reconfigure this. Currently, I, I did misunderstand something in my application. This is treated already as a third bedroom, but because they'll have more room, they can better define the space. And this is where the bedroom would be and then this would be like a little living area. So what I need to show you in terms of criteria, so because we're not adding any new non-conformities, all we need is a special permit. So this is, this structure is lawfully pre-existing. Both buildings on the site were built before nineteen hundred and the site has always been residential. The changes will certainly not be more, substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, in part because of the vegetation in front of the cottage, you won't even be able to, the public won't even be able to see it. As I said earlier, the building is currently non-conforming in the front and the right, but we're not adding any new non-conformities. And in terms of the criteria for special permit, there won't be any change to the traffic, to the utilities, to the natural environment or the neighborhood character. We're not creating any flood risk, but it will make the carriage house more valuable from a tax perspective. And then just you can see how crowded it is up here and then this is the current staircase, really quite dangerous. So I respectfully request your approval for this special permit and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Question on the, I guess you call it an attached shed on the right side. Is that, that's not getting any bigger than what was above it?
Correct.
So it's not affecting that right, is there a right-of-way there to the person in the back? Not affiliated with the condominium?
They share a driveway with the neighboring property. They share a driveway with the neighboring property. Well...
But he has a right-of-way, right?
Let me rephrase that. Their driveway goes onto the neighboring property, I, I can't remember what the Eastman actually says. But if I were to show you, if I could, if I, you could see that a piece of the driveway goes onto the neighboring property.
So, in the bump out on the back, is that going to take away that little road that you drive on to go around?
No.
That's still going to be there?
Yes, it has to be.
It's just going to be under the deck, the second floor part?
Exactly.
Seems tight, seems so tight. And is this part of the condominium?
It is.
And we have the, we have the approval of the condominium association for this application?
They have approved it, I can get you something in writing.
Well, it's usually in the applicant, in the application.
Oh, I apologize.
Okay, no problem, if you say you have it, I believe you. Any other questions? Okay, public testimony, is anyone wishing to speak in favor of the application? Please come forward, anyone, or if you're on the computer, raise your hand. Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Any opposition? Again, none, so we don't need any rebuttal, discussion by the board, or are we ready for a motion?
Michael, could you speak right into the microphone?
Yes, yeah, my bad.
I'm sorry.
I just was saying that I think they're, they're making pretty good use of the limited space that they have there, they're tucking a little area in the back under the deck, they're getting rid of the deck along the right-hand side and replacing it with just a small storage area, I don't know how big it is, but it doesn't, it's only sticking out as far as the deck, a little more substantial on the front, but I think there's a lot of vegetation on the front as well.
Yeah.
So, I think it's a good project, I think it is an increase in non-conformity, it's, to me, it's not substantially more detrimental. I can make a motion if you want.
Go to it.
Petition of Kristen Eisenzoff seeking special permit...
Michael?
Wrong one, yep, my bad.
Sorry.
It's late, I'm ready to go home. Petition of Mary and Douglas Humphrey, excuse me, seeking special permit to alter and expand a non-conforming structure, 1.9 at 156 Hesperus Ave. I would move approval for the special permit, it does increase the non-conformity, it's not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, I'd move approval.
Motion made, go ahead. Second. Motion made and seconded, roll call vote for approval?
Ms. Slickty?
Yes, good luck, it looks like a nice project.
Mr. Canavo?
Yes.
Mr. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Gelati?
Yes.
Mr. Prezy?
Yes.
Are there decisions favorable? We'd appreciate a draft to speed things up.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Do you want something from the condo trustees for the file?
I, I imagine the building department might, but no, if, if you have it, if they voted it, that's fine, we're good.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any, any other questions by the board at this time? Or we, our next meeting, June 27th, we have a big agenda, so we're, a lot of work, a lot of prep work. Thank you all.
Eva?
Need a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Should we bring him in? I mean, I don't know what it's about.
Know what it is for?
If you want to bring him in, I'll, we'll talk to him before we go. Ralph, did you have a issue, question?
Yes, I had an application earlier, 25 Grapevine, this is Kelly Max Alves from 36 Greeve, and I'd like to withdraw, I might jump in the meeting late, I'm sorry about that.
Okay, yep, we're still, we're still in session, so we can deal with that. You wish to withdraw without prejudice, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, not a problem, yeah, we just needed to hear from you personally.
Perfect, I appreciate that, thank you.
Going to entertain a motion to accept withdrawal without prejudice for 25 Grapevine Road?
I make that motion.
Motion made by Michael, seconded by Peter, roll call vote?
Mr. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Gelati?
Yes.
Mr. Canavo?
Yes.
Ms. Slickty?
Yes.
Mr. Prezy?
Yes, they're all set, it's withdrawn.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion to adjourn, roll call vote?
Mr. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Gelati?
Yes.
Mr. Canavo?
Yes.
Ms. Slickty?
Yes.
Mr. Prezy?
Yes, we are adjourned.